Ready? We'll start with the salute to the flag, and then we'll take a moment of silence for father of Thomas Legori, mother-in-law of Janine Redondo, retirees Valerie Reed, Patricia Castellani, and John Osborne.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm John McMarrey, Superintendent of Schools, and we welcome you to our board meeting this evening. We have been busy this past month. Jen Keen and her athletic department have kept us very busy. A lot of our sports teams have been doing very well, so we're looking forward to our county championship game tomorrow night for our football team. But our girls soccer team won the county championship. Our boys cross-country team won the county championship. We had quite a busy time in the fall, so congratulations to all of our athletes. We look forward to welcoming them at our next meeting to officially recognize all of our county championships. I just wanted to start tonight, a little bit later in our agenda, we're going to be making a couple of appointments or approvals, one for a new administrator in the district, and that's our Director of Facilities. Our Director of Facilities, Tom Fuji, is retiring, and that will go into effect in December 20th. So we started a search for a new Director of Facilities, and we're real fortunate to have someone right here in Wantagh to take on that leadership role. It's such an important role for us as they oversee operations for facilities in all five of our schools and all of our fields, and certainly a critical role for us. So a little bit later on in our agenda, the Board of Education is going to be appointing Rob Lovergi, who is our current head custodian at Wantagh High School, and also served as our head custodian at Wantagh Elementary School. He has been with us for the past five years, has done an outstanding job in that role during that time, and we really look forward to welcoming him and taking on that new role in our district. I know Rob is here tonight, so I just wanted to congratulate him and welcome him as our Director of Facilities in the district. Congratulations, Rob. And we fill one spot and create another opening, and that's for our head custodian at the high school. Jake Schaefer is here this evening. Jake has been serving as our assistant head at the high school in the evenings. Those of you that are here at evening events, he is a familiar face, always here helping out, and Jake is going to be filling in or taking on that new role as head custodian at Wantagh High School, so congratulations to Jake as well. Jake has also been with us for a number of years, I think 17 years now in the district, Jake, both at Forest Lake and here at the high school. He's really done an outstanding job for us, so we look forward to taking on this new leadership role at the high school. A couple of things for us to report out tonight. One is with our auditors. We have Mary Ann Van Dyne here this evening. Mary Ann has done her independent audit. She works at R.S. Abrams as their managing partner, does an outstanding job over there, and her team spent quite a bit of time with us this summer, taking a look at the books and giving us some feedback, so we invited Mary Ann here tonight to report to the board on their findings. So I'll turn it over to her.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you to the board for inviting me to present the results. So this year, we did three audits. We met with the Audit Committee last month and went over the audits, the three audits with them. You have community members as well as board members on your committee, so it's a very strong committee as far as, you know, financial background. So we reviewed those reports, and I'm happy to report, all three reports received what we call an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you could get for all three audits. The one audit is your financial statement audit. We also do an audit of your extra classroom clubs, and then we also do what we call a single audit, which is a compliance audit of your grants. So all in all, great results. We were very happy that everything checked out. I wanted to thank Anthony and his team. They do a great job working with my team to get all these audits done in a timely manner. They have a great system. They all work very well together, and, you know, it makes it easier for us to be able to do our job, and I thank Anthony and the rest of the team for all the help that they gave us during the audit. In addition to issuing an opinion on those three audits, we also give you some recommendations. We did have two recommendations, one for extra classroom and one for accounting procedures at the year end. These were considered, as we say, other matters. There was nothing material, but it was a recommendation, and I'm happy to report that Anthony has already taken our recommendations seriously and is implementing all those recommendations. All in all, you do have very strong controls. We always like to give you additional, you know, ideas on how to improve those controls, but you do have an excellent control system within your operations. Financially, you had a very good year this year. Fortunately, the interest rates went up this year, so all of my districts did very well on the revenue side of the budget. You also received more state aid this year. This is not a self-sustaining, but this year, most districts received a large increase in their state aid. You also saved money on debt service because one of your debts now rolled off, one of your bonds matured, so you did save about 1.2 million in debt service, went down this year, so that was a nice cost savings on the expense side of the budget. So overall, you were at the 4% on your unassigned fund balance, which is your fund balance for any short-term needs. You're also setting monies aside in reserves for a long-term picture. So all in all, you do have a very strong financial plan to prepare yourself for the current as well as the future. So Anthony does a great job, and really, he's done a great job over the years in getting you to that point, so you're more prepared for anything that may come down the road. So really, you know, great results with three audits, you know, very, very nice team working with you guys, and thank you again. Thank you, the Audit Committee, for meeting with us last month, and overall, very, very good reports this year, once again.
Great. Thank you, Mary Ann. Any questions for Mary Ann by the board? Great. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
One other report, too, just in terms of audits. We received an audit, really over the past two years, we've been working with the New York State Comptroller's Office on an audit of our financial controls in terms of our financial management system. So we posted that report to our website. Just a couple of notes you can see on here about it. They began the audit back in September of 2022, and really just looking at our financial management software and user rights within that, and they made some recommendations in terms of that. We've already implemented those. A lot of that work was already in place when they arrived, and we have submitted their corrective action plan to the Comptroller's Office as well. And within the report, you know, we were happy to see they didn't uncover any instances of any questionable transactions or activity, and we've been able to clean up a lot of the controls in terms of user access as well. So just an update to the board on that. Also, just something that has been a topic of discussion across Long Island and really across New York State over the past several weeks has been New York State Education Department's regionalization plan. This is a plan for districts to share resources across each region within New York, led kind of by the DS, the district superintendent for BOSIs in each region. There's been some great concern in Long Island communities and certainly within our community as well regarding this plan. The language within the regulation really seems to limit local control over many of those decisions, which is raising some concerns. Our Board of Education sent a letter several weeks ago to the New York State Education Department expressing those concerns and continues to follow up about that. The regulation that New York State Education Department put forth was an emergency regulation, so many folks are questioning why it needs to be done in an emergency state to expedite it, and the public comment period for that ends in a couple of weeks, and they're waiting to see if they're going to make any adjustments to the language within that regulation based upon the public feedback that has been received to date. I'll turn over the board. Any questions, discussion about the state regionalization plan? plan?
John, on Monday, Laura and I attended a meeting for the Coalition of School Boards, where we met with other boards that are concerned about this. Our understanding is that the public commentary ends on Sunday, and then they're looking for the regulation, which was made as an emergency regulation because it supports the general welfare of the state, would become permanent in January. In meeting with the other districts, there are some districts that are putting together to pursue the state on Article 78, and that's something that we as a board are considering. We're looking to create a unified voice from the school boards.
Yeah, so just to give you a general, you know, idea, once this administrative regulation becomes a full regulation, it's got the weight of law. So until the legislature can then pass something else to override this regulation, it will be law. We know that some of the legislatures or legislators are trying to pass a bill called "Our Schools Are Rules," but it's probably not going to get passed before January until, you know, everyone meets again up in Albany. So like Jen said, we are considering joining in the Article 78 proceeding. Right now, we've been told there's fifteen districts that have signed on to be petitioners in this proceeding. We would all obviously split the costs. That would, they're saying it'd be about $125,000 to be split between every district that joins in this lawsuit, and honestly, or the proceeding, and honestly, we kind of feel like it might be worth a few thousand dollars and hope that others join on as well. There's always power in numbers, so it's just something that we've been discussing over the last, you know, few days.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Fisher?
From the session that you attended, which attorney's office is leading this effort?
It's Regano and Regano. Nick Regano is the attorney. I believe they are out of Laurel Park, Laurel Park. I did some preliminary research, but I do think we need to look more into the law firm.
Okay. Yeah, and one clarification for everyone's benefit who's listening. There's been a lot of information out there. There's a frequently asked questions section on the website from the state. Just to be clear, the wording of the regulation itself is what controls, not what folks say on a webcast or put on a website. Some of that information does not line up with the wording in the regulation, which is what is so concerning, I think for myself, I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I think has been concerning for many people, which could end up requiring districts across the state to share resources. There's no specifics around that or what that means, which is most concerning for me.
And what is also very concerning is although the webinar and the frequently asked questions and some folks will say is that in that it says that there's an opt-out, the actual regulation has no opt-in or opt-out option, and that's what's very concerning.
One question I had. So in addition to this regulation, they're also putting out a second regulation, changing the role and definition of the BOSI Superintendent. So in our case, the Nassau BOSI Superintendent, who oversees us, which would now give that Superintendent the ability to investigate districts within Nassau, basically do everything that the Commissioner theoretically could do right now. Is this challenge also challenging that regulation or just the regionalization regulation?
Initially, it's just the regionalization. They're going to do one at a time. One thing to note about the second regulation is there is no public commentary period on that. I'm not sure why that is, but that was brought up very clearly that there is not, and they feel that this process is a couple of steps, right? So one is the Article 78 to fight the regulation. The other is to share with the community, which is what we're doing today, as well as our letter that we've sent out and talking to others on Long Island, because they're hoping that the "Our Schools and Our Rules," the legislation, both the Senate and the Assembly can pass that bill, and that will get involved. That will also impact the second regulation.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, could I just, would you maybe clarify where everybody could get the actual regulation instead of looking at some of the questions and answers that we have actual information?
So the regulation itself, there is a NISA regionalization website, which will have an FAQ and such on it. If you just type in nisa.gov/regionalization, you could go there. The regulation itself, I don't believe, is on there. It's published in the New York State Register. September 25, 2024, it was published, so you can find that online. You could read the actual text.
Is that something, John, that we can consider putting on our site with our letter?
Yep. Sure. The letter itself is posted on the main page, and we can put a link within that.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Just let me ask Jen. The attorneys were at the meeting that you attended with Laura?
There were attorneys there, but not the attorney that is representing the Coalition.
Okay. And what kind of a timeframe do we have to join in on this?
We have till tomorrow to sign on to the regulation. They plan litigation, sorry. It's being filed on Monday.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Another update as well, New York State related. As part of the budget process last year with New York State, they passed, in passing their budget, they asked the Rockefeller Institute to take a look at the state aid formula, the foundation aid formula that's used to provide aid to school districts. So this is something they've been watching closely. The Rockefeller Institute is doing this work in a relatively short timeframe. It's about seven or eight months in the past. This is work that has been done over a couple of years, but they've, over the summer, they've had forums. We had the ability to submit comment and share concerns about the existing foundation aid formula, as well as concerns about any changes they may be making to that formula, as well as recommendations, things for them to consider. That report is due to New York State December 1st and could have a profound impact on the way that aid is calculated across the state. So we're just keeping a close eye on that to see what that entails and how that will be implemented potentially for the 2025-26 budget cycle. So more to come with that. We haven't seen any drafts. We haven't seen any comment to date about the direction they're heading there. We've just seen the, you know, the public comment that's taken place. So more to come. At our next meeting, we'll update you on what that looks like. Also, just update on our Beach Street property, 1865 Beach Street, where We Friends formerly was. We had a long-term lease, the district did, with that organization, and that lease expired this year. So it's just time for the board to start to consider options in terms of that property, in terms of repurposing it. We've had it assessed in terms of some of the construction needs. Our district architect presented at our last meeting in terms of some of those needs, so we'll just need to continue the conversation about options, either repurposing it for other uses in the district, considering selling the property, and kind of furthering that throughout the year. So continue to take a look at that. And then lastly for me, just a, well, two things. One reminder, our meeting next month, typically we meet at eight o'clock. That meeting will take place at seven o'clock instead of eight o'clock. So just for those of you that regularly attend our meetings, just please note that time change on December 12th. And then just lastly, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you for attending this evening. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. D1, approval of minutes. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor? E, external audit. F, financials. F1, financial reports. F2, budget transfers. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second. All in favor? G, personnel. G1, approval of personnel items. Is there a motion?
Move.
Second. All in favor? I'm going to abstain from this. H, contractual and other authorizations. H1, related services agreement. H2, town of Hensted School bus stop arm enforcement program, opt-in. H3, health services agreement. H4, corrective action plans, internal audit. H5, transportation contracts. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor? H6, deputy treasurer. H7, terms of employment. H8, extra classroom activity charters. H9, donations. The Board of Education approves a donation of $1,180 from the Forest Lake Elementary School PTA for the second-grade field trip to the Jones Beach Nature Center. We'd like to thank the Forest Lake PTA for their generous gift. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor? 10, disposal of obsolete books. H11, disposal of obsolete equipment. H12, business advisory board. H13, destruction of ballots. H14, budget vote trustee elections calendar. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor? To I, unfinished business. J, new business. J1, approval of committees on special education and preschool education recommendations. J2, policy revisions. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor? I'm sorry, I missed one. J4, cybersecurity, oh, J3, removal of policies. J4, cybersecurity plans. Is there a motion? Second. All in favor? Is there any new motions brought to the floor?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that the board vote on joining the Article 78 proceeding.
Is there a second? All in favor? That motion is passed. Okay, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor? We're going to move on to our organizational report. Student Government?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danny Donahue.
And my name is Isabella Kugal, and we are the student body presidents for the 2024-2025 school year.
We would like to start by saying that this spectacular event in October was a success. All of the elementary students had a wonderful time making slime, collecting candy, and getting tattoos. For this month, November has been filled with significant events and celebrated outcomes like with our sports teams. The girls varsity soccer team made program history by making it to the Long Island Championship for the first time ever. Great job. Girls' varsity volleyball made it to the Nassau County Championship. Our boys cross-country team won the Nassau County Championship, and the football team defeated Cold Spring Harbor 55 to 6 during the Nassau County semifinals, and will face Plain Edge tomorrow in the county championship at 4:00 p.m. Definitely a game you don't want to miss. As you can see, our fall sports teams had tremendous success this year, so great job to all the athletes. Winter sports will be starting soon, and we have full confidence that the teams will excel.
On Tuesday, the Wantagh Guidance Department hosted an informative financial aid night to guide seniors and their families during the college process. On November 25, there will be parent-teacher conferences. The first quarter of the school year has ended, so teachers and parents will have the chance to discuss how their child or children are doing. We will have student government members direct parents to their classrooms.
We had tremendous success with our Thanksgiving food drive and our letters for gratitude for veterans event. Both of these are still going on. Student government decorated boxes with each class name so students could hand in canned goods and earn points for each item which will count towards Battle of the Classes. This event is still ongoing, so we encourage further participation. In addition, this year, we started a new event where the student government set up a table across from the cafeterias with Thanksgiving-themed leather templates that students could write on to wish veterans a happy Thanksgiving and thank them for their service. This started yesterday and will continue tomorrow. So far, we have received over eighty letters and are hoping to get double this amount tomorrow. We will be delivering these letters to the VA Hospital in Northport. Going back to Battle of the Classes, we will also be trying to put the updated number of points each class has for Battle of the Classes after every event on the TVs located in the main lobby and both cafeterias. We are hoping this adds to school spirit and engagement by reemphasizing that there is a competition involved with school events.
We have many exciting events coming up as well. The senior variety show will be on Tuesday, November 26 at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. This week, the Drama Club will also be performing Puffs, a comical Harry Potter spinoff. The show days are Friday through Sunday, and tickets can be purchased online through the Wantagh Drama Instagram account. We hope to see you there. We are excited for our winter performances from the band orchestra and chorus that will take place in December.
November has been a very exciting month, as you can see.
We can't wait to share with you all more insights on what is happening within the student body. We hope you all have a great Thanksgiving and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you both. Forest Lake PTA?
Better? There we go. Hi, Matt Zinder from Forest Lake PTA. First of all, we want to thank you for choosing Forest Lake for the Elementary Family Fun Night. It was a great night, and the kids had a lot of fun. A couple of things from this month we've done. We had a holiday photo shoot where we had a professional photographer come in and take family portraits, and it went really well. Everyone seemed to really love it. We had our school holiday fair on the 18th and the 19th with a nighttime shopping with PJ's, the principal, Mr. Burke, and all the children's story. They really loved it. We have also our Thanksgiving harvest. We are, we collected a lot of food for our four families in our school, and that'll be going out to them next week. Tomorrow, we have the vendor fair in the gym. That'll be a lot of local small businesses selling all kinds of really nice stuff. We also have the Holiday Catalog fundraiser ending on the 23rd, as well as the Islanders game is also the 23rd this Saturday. Parents Night Out, we will be selling tickets for that soon. That will be on February 1st. We have a little time till then, and that's it for now. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
I have PTA councils. Can I read theirs? Chrissy and Lori, Laura couldn't be here today. They just want to say staff volleyball game. They're sending out an updated Google form for staff members to sign up. It's going to be Thursday, February 27. They just sent out their district-wide magnet notepad. They've made their debut, and they're selling them on Member Hub. If you haven't seen them, you can use it at any school. Everyone loves it. And then, on behalf of the PTA council, they are grateful for all that our PTAs, parent groups, the BOE, and the Wantagh staff and administrations do for our school, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. Mandalay PTA?
Hello, Jen Schnitzer with Wantagh Elementary PTA. We definitely have to move this down. We are tiny people. We just had our very fun Turkey Trot Fall Festival this past weekend, where the kids got to run around the school. We had shirts made up, and they had an amazing time. It was great again this year, and thanks to our school administrators and office staff, and all of our wonderful volunteers for that, and parents as well. The kids had fun. We had a pop-up sale and a hot chocolate and donuts corner. Our pop-up sale at the Turkey Trot Fall Festival had a lot of different winter-themed items, so people were able to come and purchase some things there as well, which was great. Benefited our fifth grade as well. We have our Smilos Pillow Pal fundraiser and nighttime defenders, bedtime pals, books, and accessories fundraiser, which is wrapping up. It's cute little things for the student, for the kids at nighttime. The orders are due tomorrow, the 22nd, and it's going to help support our fifth grade class. And also, we have our Sockable fundraiser, which we're raising funds with super cool socks. That's always fun, too, for the holidays or just in general. That fundraiser is from November 11 through December 6, and that's also supporting the fifth grade. Information on this is in our weekly PTA Gmail and on Parent Square for all. Information On This Is In Our Weekly PTA Gmail And On Parent Square For All Of Our Events And Activities. And Thank You So Much.
Hi, I'm Denise Risa. I'm Under The Council Delegates. We Do Have Our Holiday Fair Coming Up, December Ninth To The Thirteenth. There Will Be, Thank You. There Will Be Two Nights This Year As Opposed Only One Night. The First Night Will Be From Six To Nine Where The Parents Get To Come With Their Children And Shop. And Then We'll Also Have The Second Night On The Eleventh Where The Parents Will Also Be Able To Come. It Makes It Easier For Parents Who Work, Who Can't Come To Volunteer During The Day To Also Enjoy The Shopping With Their Children. And As Last Year, We Also Opened Up To Have Credit Cards. So We Also Take Checks, Cash And Credit Cards Now. Starting In January, We're Also Going To Be Doing Donations For A Cause. We'll Be Making Donations To Different Charity From January Through The End Of The School Year. For Example, For January, We're Going To Be Doing The American Cancer Society Where We Will Post On Member Hub The Donations That Will Be Open From The First Of The Month To The End Of The Month. And At The End Of The Month, We'll Close It Out And Donate The Money On Behalf Of The Wanta L. We Are Also Looking For The Charities That, Some Of Them Are Offering A Matching Donation. So They Will Donate, If We Make A Certain Amount Of Money, They'll Match The Amount And They'll Donate More Money On Behalf Of Wanta L. And That's About It. Happy Thanksgiving. Six To Twelve?
Hi, I'm Heather Hosek And This Is My Co-President, Sophia Stepanoff. We're Excited To Share That We Have Successfully Donated $2,000 Toward The Seventh Grade Field Trip To The Argyle Theater To See The Christmas Carol. This Exciting Experience Will Align With The Seventh Grader's ELA Curriculum. The Wanta Six Through Twelve Association Has Been Working Diligently To Raise Funds To Continually Support Our Middle And High School Students. Some Of Our Fantastic Fundraisers Organized By Our Chair, Michelle Oriole. Thank You, Michelle. Are A Wanta Pure Vita Bracelet Sale. A Wanta Warrior Embroidered Sock Sale And An Upcoming Guac Shop Fundraiser. Some Of Our Other Fundraisers Are Our Annual Comedy Night Coming Up In Belmore On January Nineteenth At 7:00 PM. We Have An Islanders Game Scheduled For February Twenty-third At 7:30 PM, Which Is A Sunday. And These Items And Events Are Available To Purchase On Our Member Hub. Hugs. Our Hugs Coordinators, We Want To Thank Them. Mary Beth Reynolds, Michelle Figlocy And Michelle Beretta For Their Ongoing Dedication To Raise Funds For Families In Need. Currently, They Have A Charleston Wrap Fundraiser And Are Establishing A Gift Card Wishlist For Families In Need For The Holidays. So Thank You To Them. And Thank You For All Of The Support From The Community. Have Very Happy Thanksgiving.
Can I Do Septa? Okay, So Septa's Pretty Short And Sweet This Month. We're Currently Running Our Third Annual Tammy's Memorable Treats, Sweets Fundraiser, Which Is Where We Dress Up Like Elves And Deliver All The Sweets To Everybody Who Purchased All The Goodies. And We Really Take Advantage Of It And Like Elves And The Whole Thing. And That's Running Until December First And You Can Purchase All The Goodies On Our Member Hub. Lastly, We Just Gave Out Our Tenth Teacher Grant Of The Year And We're Only In Like Towards The End Of November, Which Is Amazing. So We're Looking Forward To Giving Out More Into Helping Our Teachers Grow Their Classrooms. And Thank You. That's It For Septa. Can I Do WPABC As Well? Keep Going, Keep Going. I'm On A Roll. Last Week's WPABC Did Concession Stands For The Puffs-Themed Pyjama Party. So They Decorated, You Know, They Just Basically Watched The Harry Potter Movies And They Had Concessions And Everything Was Themed And The Kids Had A Great Time. This Week, The Cast And Crew Of Puffs Have Been Working Long Hours. I Know This For A Fact Because My Twins Have Not Stopped Complaining, But They're Doing Great. And To Be Sure Ready This Friday. Be Sure To Purchase Your Tickets On Our Website, Linktree/WPABC. And The Ticket Information Is On All The Socials, The School Socials, Our Socials. It's Everywhere. Can't Be Missed. There Are Shows On Friday, Saturday And Sunday. And We Have A Michael Here Today, Our Band Liaison To Give Us An Update About Band. Happy Thanksgiving.
Hi, Good Evening. So First Of All, Thank You For Letting Me Be Here To Give An Quick Update On Everything The Band's Done So Far This Year, Everything That We're Going To Be Doing. So Right Now, We're Coming Out Of Marching Season. That's Included Playing At All The Football Games, Pep Band, Field Show. We Marched The Homecoming Parade. We've Sixtieth Performance At The Annual Newsday Festival. We've Been Doing It Since It Started. And Now We're Coming Out Of That With Just A Really Strong Start To The Year With That. We've Had A Great March Season. We're Going To Start Preparing For The Concerts Now. So All Three Of The Bands Been Working Really Hard. We Have Our Concert Coming Up Thursday, December Nineteenth. Here At The School Obviously. And We're All Really Excited With Where It's Going Honestly. We're Having A Really Strong Year. And We're Also Sending Three Of Our Win On Ensemble Members To All County Division Five This Year. As Well As One Member To Division Four. So Right Now, We Have A Lot Of Strong Players And It's In A Good Place. We Have Band Day Coming Up On The Horizon. That's Going To Be February Eighth This Year. It's Saturday. Two Of Our Dedicated Senior Members Of The Band Have Just Been Selected Recently As Coordinators For This Year. So They've Already Started Working. They've Been Going To Elementary Schools, Advertising Band Day, Putting It Out There. And They're Doing A Great Job With That. So That's Just, That's Further Down. But We've Got That Coming Up. And On Top Of All This, Right Now, We're Trying To Get A Lot Of New Things In This Year. We're Trying To Make A Lot Of Positive Changes. And One Of Those Things That We've Already Done Is With The First Annual Wanta Warrior Memorial, Nine-Eleven Memorial Five-K. We Got The Pep Band Out. We Organized Them To Come Play, Support The Racers. And That Was A Major Success. So That's Something We're Hoping To Continue To Do For Years To Come If We Can. And Beyond That, Coming Up Early December, We're Going To Be Doing The Clinic With The Seventh Grade Band. The Win Ensemble Is Going To Push Into One Of Their Rehearsals And Work With Them. So With The Goal That, Whoops. They Can Ideally Learn From The Older Kids, Have Fun. It's Going To Sort Of Work As A Recruitment Method, Get Kids Stay In Band. We Lose The Most Kids Going From Seventh To Eighth Grade When They, You Know, They're Allowed To Drop. So We're Really Hoping That's Going To Make A Difference In Just Retention Over That Gap. So With That, We Have Like Just A Lot Of Things That We're Trying To Do. And We Want To Get The Band More Involved With The Community Just In General. Be More Present Everywhere. That's Generally Going To Be One Of The Themes For Changes We're Making. And Within The Band, We're Just Trying To Make Things More Streamlined With How We Organize Ourselves, Our Internal Leadership. So Really With Where We're At Right Now, We've Already Done A Lot Of Great Things This Year. And We're All Really Excited For What We're Going To Be Doing. We're Proud To Have A Strong Program As We Have And We've Always Had. So We Also Just Want To Thank The Board Of Ed Obviously For Always Supporting Us With This. Always See You Guys At All Our Events. It Helps. So Just Thank You Guys For That Again. Thanks For Letting Me Be Here. And We're Excited To See Where Things Go. Excited To Give You Guys Another Update Later On The Year On What We've Done. And Till Then, Hope Everyone Has Happy Thanksgiving Weekend. And Thank You. Good Night.
Hi, I'm Lisette Montaganel, Treasurer Of The Booster Club. And You Know, Just As A Quick Update, As I've Shared Last Month, We're Having A Strong Year Already With Our Merchandise Sales That Have Our Current Mascot As Well As Some New Designs. So You Know, We're Trying To Be As Present As We Can Be In Any Football Game Or Any Sports Game And Will Continue To Do That. We Also Had A Holiday Store Open For A Specific Time For Holiday Delivery. That Was Pretty Successful As Well Because Sometimes We Didn't Have Actual Merchandise That Sold Out. We Were Able To Do It That Way. So That Was, That Was Great. Also, We Still Have It Open, The President Just Told Me, With A New Link For Sales. And The Only Difference Is That We Can Still, You Can Still Purchase It, But It'll Just Come After The Holidays. What's To Come Are The Basketball Tournaments Are Happening During The First Week Of December. The Times Are To Be Announced. Our General Membership Currently Is At Two Hundred And Sixty-five. In Addition, We've Acquired Seven Corporate Sponsors, Which Is Awesome, Of Our Community. Our Social Media Pages, Which Is New For The Booster Club. We Are, Which Are On Instagram And Facebook. We're Still Continuing To Highlight All Of Our Student Athletes. Their Accomplishments, Their Accolades. You Know, We Just Kind Of Take The Pictures Of Like, For Example, The Sign-In That Was Pretty Exciting For The D-one, D-two Athletes. And We're Still Encouraging Anyone, Especially Not For The Winter Sports That Are Coming, To Send A Search Else Pictures. Even Alumni, Just To Show Where Wanta Is At Right Now. So That We Can Share It Also To Everybody Else And The Community. We Want To Wish Our Football Team The Best Of Luck Tomorrow. We Will Be There Despite The Weather. And Lastly, The Booster Club Is Just Truly Grateful For The Board, The Administration, Other Boards. And We Wish You And Your Families A Very Happy Thanksgiving And A Nice Recession. Thank You. Thank You. Happy Thanksgiving. Wanta Foundation? Okay, We're Going To Open It Up To Public Comment If Anybody Would Like To Come To The Mic Has Anything To Say.
Good Evening To All Of You. So I Just Want To Say That I'm Really Happy To Hear That You're Getting Involved With This Regionalization Thing. So I Don't Remember. I Would Like To You To Repeat Again How Many Schools Are Involved In This Lawsuit? I'd Like To Know. And I Really Feel Strongly About This In Terms Of Even When We Had The COVID. When We Had Hokel Force Us With The Warrior Name And The Mascot. We Cannot Be In A Box. We Should Have Been Fighting All Along For Everything. Because We're Trying To Teach Our Kids To Be, Think Outside The Box. And To Have Choices. We Have The Freedom. And Our State Government Is Taking Away Our Freedoms. So I, I Really Think, I'm Really Happy To Hear That You're Getting Involved In This In A Big Way. That Makes Me Happy. Now, I Don't Think People Realize The Significance Of This. Already, They're Doing This In The City Schools. I Have Friends That Live In Queens And Manhattan. And This Is Not Good And It's Only Good To Get Worse. So Just, I, You Sent Out The Letter To All Of Us. I'm A Part Of A Union. And Right Now, What I Love Is That They're Being Transparent And They Keep Sending Us Updates. And That's Important To Me. Because I Sent A Letter To The State And I CC'd The Board And I Didn't Hear Back. So It Would Mean A Lot To Me If We Could Get More Communication In That, Even If It's The Most Ridiculously Simple Thing. Because It Keeps The Fire Going. The Other Aspect Of This Is, And I'm Happy To Help, Is I'm Sad To See The Behind Me, There's Not Really A Lot Of People Here. And I Feel That Way All The Time. And I Haven't Been In A While As Well. So I'm A Culprit Of That. If We Could Get, Put A Fire Under The Community Members. And I'm Not Sure How, But If You Could Utilize Us In Some Way So We Could Fight For This. Because Your Jobs Are All On The Line And I'm Concerned About Your Job. And This Is Serious. We As A Community Have To Advocate For Our Kids. And I Feel Like It's Going To Be Completely Taken Away From Us. So I Don't Know How, But I'm All For Having The Community Involved Some In Some Way. When United We Stand. If We Don't Come Together, Then We Don't Have A Leg To Stand On. And I Feel Every District, Every District That's A Part Of This Thing Needs To Get Involved In This Lawsuit. And I Feel Disgusted If They Don't. Because That's The Only Way It's Going To Happen. And I Think That Was It. Yes, Thank You. Have A Good Thanksgiving.
Thank You. Happy Thanksgiving.
Hello, Good Evening. Real Quick, Won't Take Up Too Much Time. My Name Is Lauren. I'm A Forest Lake Mom. I Have Two Young Boys At Forest Lake. We've Been In The Community For About Three Years. I Just Wanted To Raise Some Awareness About, Around Bus Aides. So I Think We Have Roughly Five Or So Buses At Forest Lake Elementary School. Sure, There's More At The Other Elementary Schools. But It's To My Understanding That Other Surrounding Districts Like Levittown Have Bus Aides On Their Buses. And At Times, Our Buses Get A Little Wild. There's Plus Thirty Kids On Every Bus, One Bus Driver. So Little Concern Around Safety. You Know, We Have One Wonderful Mr. Burke Who Puts Out A Lot Of Fires. But He Can Only Do It At School Proper And He's One Guy, One Person. So I Just Wanted To Come Here Tonight, Raise Some Awareness That There's Possibly A Need For A Bus Aid. I Know Financials Are Always A Concern. It's Great News To Hear That We Did Great On Our Audits. But If, You Know, I Hope To Follow Up With The Board And Just Raise The Issue. Maybe That's Something That We Can Visit In The Future. Thank You.
Thank You. Anybody Else? Okay. Good Night, Everybody. Wait.
I'm Going To Answer DVS's Question. So From My Understanding, I Mean Literally As We Were Walking Into This Meeting, Another Board Voted To Join The Proceedings. At This Count, It's Sixteen Districts.
With Us?
With Us, Right? With Us. That Could, Could And Hopefully Will Change By Tomorrow. Tomorrow Is The Deadline. But That's Sixteen Across New York State. So I'm With You That We Would Love More Districts To Join. We're Getting The Word Out. John, Do You Know How Many Districts Are Either On Long Island Or In The State? I Have No Idea.
Yeah, So There's Fifty-Six In Nassau County. And We Have Just Shy Of Six Hundred Across The State. Fifty-Six In Nassau County. Just Shy Of Six Hundred Across The State.
And Six Hundred Across The State?
Correct.
And Then I Have A Question Because I Really Wanted To Go Today And I, I Work. Did Anyone Go To Blakeman's? He Had Something Today At Eleven Thirty Speaking About It. Did Anyone Go To That?
No, But It's On Facebook Live. And If You Go Under, I'm Checking Out His Page. Jack? Hold On. Yet. Jack, Oh, Senator Jack Martins. So It's His Page. So You Do @SenatorJackMartins, M-A-R-T-I-N-S. And You Probably Can See The Replay Of His Facebook Live. You Know, The Whole Press, Press.
And Lauren And I Met With Jack On Monday. He's The One Introducing The Bill. Our Schools Are Rules. But We Just Got Invited To The Press Conference Last Night. And We Also All Work. So We're Trying To Watch The Press Conference. We Were Where It Was Them Talking About Their Bill.
Wonderful. And I Just Wanted We Gonna Read. Like You Know How Like You Get People Together And Maybe You Protest In Front Of Like, I'm There. I'm There. So I Mean, If We Could Really Get Something Together. One Person Is Not Going To Do It. We Really Need A Group. Oh, One Last Question. I'm Sorry. Because You Mentioned Fifty-Six. You Said In Nassau County. Just In Nassau. I Mean, You Said There's Sixteen. So I Mean, Granted, Maybe More. Do You Have Anything You Feel In Your Heart That This Could Like Get Bigger? Because This Seventeen Isn't Anything. Sixteen.
Well, They Only Have Till Tomorrow To Respond, So.
And How Could I Find Out, By The Way?
Okay.
Like As You Said, Tomorrow's The Deadline. And Monday, Whatever. How Could I Find Out? Like How Could We Find Out If How Many People Like?
I Don't Know. I Mean, They're Going To File On Monday When We Know The Number On Monday.
We'll Get A Copy, We'll Get A Copy Of The Proceeding Paper.
And If It Doesn't Come, I'm Sure It'll Come Out. But If Anything, I Would Love To, If You Could Just Notify The Community Somehow. I Love To Have More Communication. It's Helpful.
We Also Can't, So We Won't, That's When They're Filing. We Also Can't Talk About Active Suits Once They're Active.
Yeah, I Just Was Curious. Yeah, That's True Too. I Mean, But Like You Know, Just, You Know What I Mean? I Want To Know How Many People Too. Thank You.
Okay, We All Good? All Right? Good Night, Everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.